Good evening and welcome to this evening's Fairmont Area School Board Meeting on Tuesday, November fifteenth, two thousand sixteen. For roll call, all board members are present. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You have the minutes before you.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Del. We have a motion to approve the October twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, school board meeting minutes as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Julie. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or amendments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to the agenda. As far as I know, we have no changes to the agenda with the exception that assignments have been made as to who will present particular parts. Danielle will present the canvassing of votes, resolutions. Rufus will present the December school board meeting schedule, and Julie will present the choir orchestra trip. Any other changes? Okay. May I entertain a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve that agenda as presented.
Thank you, Julie.
Second.
Thank you, Dan. We have a motion and a second to approve the November fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, school board meeting agenda as currently presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to our celebrations and community school reports. We have Mrs. Joyce Forrester here from the American, for the American Education Week proclamation and EMF activities presentation.
Well, I'm proud to be here tonight representing the many dedicated, hard-working educators of Education Minnesota Fairmont and celebrating the ninety-fifth anniversary of American Education Week. So, Happy American Education Week. I will now read the American Education Week proclamation. Whereas, American Education Week is an opportunity to recognize the accomplishments and the needs of our local public schools, and whereas our public schools have enabled generations of American families to build upon the lessons of the past, to achieve the dreams of tomorrow, and whereas American system of public education relies not only on the skills and dedication of teachers, school administrators, and educational support staff, but also on the encouragement and support of the entire community. And whereas teachers in the Fairmont area are joining teachers and students and educational organizations around the nation in special activities in honor of American Education Week. Now therefore, I Joyce Forrester, Education Minnesota Fairmont President, along with the Fairmont area teachers, am asking parents, students, and civic leaders to join in the nation's annual salute to public education during the week of November fourteenth through the eighteenth, two thousand sixteen, and do hereby proclaim this week to be American Education Week. I also want to tell you about the many, many activities we as Education Minnesota Fairmont members take part in. As an organization, our main goal is to improve the educational opportunities for our students. We work hard to be prepared with well-organized and motivating lessons for our students. We go the extra mile to help meet our students' needs and find success. Secondly, Education Minnesota Fairmont works to help our profession by providing training opportunities to better our instruction, meeting with other teachers across the state to exchange ideas, and to keep abreast on current trends in education. Lastly, our organization believes in giving back to the community, which supports us so fully. We do this in a variety of ways. We have a float in the homecoming parade. We ring the bell for the Salvation Army for a number of days at a local grocery store. We have a staff Christmas food drive where we collect canned goods for the local food shelves. We participate at the career fair at the high school in which we man a booth to give information and encourage students to go into the teaching profession. We had up a school-wide food drive in March in which the students bring canned goods to restock the local food shelves at a time when as much needed. We choose a community organization and an individual to honor as our friend of education for supporting our school, and we give tokens of appreciation to the many support staffs at our schools, the cooks, the custodians, the crossing guards, the bus drivers, and the administrative assistants. We also sponsor a youth through, sponsoring a youth Socrates. Lastly, we started our biggest community project a couple of years ago, where we distribute books during the interlock and heritage day parade. Last year, we distribute over two thousand children's books to kids ages zero to eighteen. This project was so well-received that we were given the State Community Service Award from the AFL-CIO. So, that's all the labor unions in the state. We got the top award for that project. We want to continue with this project, but it takes money to purchase the books. So, anybody out there, if you have a community organization or an individual that would like to contribute financially, please contact me, Joyce Forrester, at Fairmont Elementary. It'd be so appreciated as the children's and parents' eyes light up when they see they're given a book. They truly like it more than a piece of candy. I just want to thank you, the school board, for allowing me to share some of the projects Education Minnesota Fairmont is involved in. We are so humbled and honored that the citizens of Fairmont trust us with their most valuable possession, their children. We take this responsibility seriously and promise to do all we can to give them the best education possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you, Julie.
That's really an impressive award to have received.
Absolutely.
And I, I think it is extremely and completely appropriate because of all the work that you do as a group to benefit the children in our area, and ultimately, all those goals and everything that you talked about goes back to the very first purpose of, purpose, and that is to improve the educational opportunities for students. And you are indeed working very hard to do that, and we thank you very much for those efforts. Now, we will hear from, anything else? No? Okay. Now, we'll hear from Ronnie Dower, who's going to talk to us about CER.
Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to express our appreciation and gratitude for all that you do and the school district staff and the community citizens for our CER and our community. Last week, we celebrated our open house, and Danielle was there for the program for communities on a lifetime, for a lifetime, which we'll, we'll be hearing more about, I think, in the future in our community. But it was a perfect segue into our forty-fifth year of service to citizens of Fairmont in this area. So, Fairmont, the community ed has grown from an idea in the minds of our state legislature and our city council and our school board in nineteen seventy-one, to a summer program in nineteen seventy-two, to a year-round program offering a wide variety of quality learning and leisure opportunities for all ages. We are, we serve the K through twelve, but we also serve E through adult populations, and we're a great connector for the school district and the community, I think. We have a long-practiced philosophy of lifelong learning and citizen and community engagement and collaborative partnerships between the school and the city and the surrounding area. The community's support from local business, city, school, and private citizens, as well as its very strong advocacy for youth and youth activities and scholarships, is truly amazing here. I want to thank all, including the Martin County Youth Foundation, and the Fairmont Firefighters, and the Martin County Area Foundation, and local business and industry, as well as our dedicated instructors and our volunteer coaches and our volunteer instructors who help make community ed programs the way, the quality that they are. The caring certainly makes a difference in the lives of everyone that we touch. Our citizens advisory council meets regularly and is representative of our populations. It acts as our ear to the changing needs and the issues of the community. So, I want to say special thanks and gratitude to these members, Mayor Bob Wallace and the city council representative Chad Askelen, Superintendent Joe Brown, and the school board representative Danielle Schutz, Stephanie Bouchon from Convention and Visitors Bureau, Margaret Dillard from the Chamber of Commerce, Tom Mahoney, Martin County Commissioner, David Adams, Dan Brookins, Erin Morrell, Judy Moritz, Kristy Pomeranki, Betsy Stuber, Lillian Peterson, Jenny Trushinsky, Miranda Teridescu, and Anna Garbers. If anyone ever has a concern or wants to bring an issue of concern to our community ed program, they can feel free to contact any of these advisory council members, or they can call our office. We need to hear how we can improve, and so we always appreciate those kinds of calls. I also want to recognize and thank our dedicated staff and our community volunteers for their extra efforts, including Chris Seifert, who handles all the office management and the community engagement through social media. She does an outstanding job with the community calendar and training requesters, so that it will be a countywide calendar. Lots of great things are happening because of Chris's intuitive desire to make it happen the right way. Also, I want to thank Caitlin Fitzloff, Donna Paris, and Cindy Olpheim for our lights-on after-school enrichment activities. Patty Matthews is our Fairmont Early Childhood Initiatives home visitor and Early Childhood Dental Network coordinator. We also want to thank our adult basic ed and English class instructors, Sarah Schultz, Kellen Wosley, and Chris Eisenminger, and also Betty Egan. We offer programs for youth, including early learning and after-school enrichment and instructional sports. We have offered a summer playground program this summer, thanks to additional support from the city, and we hope that those kind of things will continue. Our basic education program is, includes free GED preparation. It includes improvement, ways to improve skills in reading and math and writing and work readiness. We have an English language class for adult learners. We offer distance learning classes through our adult basic ed program so people can study at home if they have the computer capabilities, study for their GED at home as well. We also offer services to House of Hope, law enforcement, and the workforce center. So, our adult basic ed program keeps, keeps busy, and I have some dedicated instructors with that. I think we really do foster partnerships and collaborations with other organizations and agencies. It promotes a positive usage of all the community resources for the betterment of all our citizens. We actively seek new ways to be involved in achieving these goals of whole communities collaborating for the good, and people in our school district and in our community are all a great part of that. We partner with school and city to provide for a variety of adult lifelong learning and leisure opportunities, including adult Richmond classes, co-ed adult recreational leagues in volleyball and basketball and softball and sand volleyball. We have open walking in the summer in the school years, open volleyball and open pickleball in our gyms. We work with a lot of parent-youth sports associations to provide additional facility usage for the needs in, in the gym, for practices and sports camps for all. It includes the school practices and games. It's all coordinated through this facility scheduling package that we use, and Chris does a great job of administering that part of it. We also provide the home base for the Fairmont Early Childhood Initiative, the Martin County Early Childhood Dental Network, and Safe Roads to School. We are involved in several annual events for many years, the Family Fun Fair, the Youth Activities Expo, and also the Area Career Exploration, includes direct CER involvement. We are represented on several community coalitions, including the statewide Health Improvement Program, SHIP, Steering Committee, the Park Board, the Fairmont Early Childhood Initiative, Fairmont Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, which is now transitioning and expanding to the countywide schools with the recently received Drug-Free Communities Grant, Youth First Incorporated, Healthy Youth, Bland and Broadband Community Grant, and the Community Countywide Calendar of Events. So, just to name a few. I truly believe that we do enhance the quality of life for our community and the surrounding area. Through its involvement and engagement with community and people, lifelong learning and community education is vital to our community's well-being and economic vitality in the Fairmont area of life. We offer opportunities for lifelong learning adventures, and we do have a lot of adventures. I just wrote up an article for the December newsletter, and you can go snowshoeing, you can rent snowshoes for our office, and people said, "Really?" I took someone down from our new learners, our adult learners class to get registered for vote, to vote last week. She was so excited. What a rewarding opportunity, and it just kind of fell into the right spot. So, there's lots of wonderful stories. We have childcare and transportation now available through our English classes that are offered during the day, and the class continues to grow. The other day, we had, I think it was four little ones and probably eight adults in the class at this point. And so, it's, it's growing, and these people need, need these kinds of opportunities. I offer, I encourage all citizens to become involved in these community life activities and to engage in these lifelong learning adventures that are available through our school and our community and community ed. With that, I just want to thank all of you so much for your continued support of our community education and recreation program. I have felt very privileged to be part of this special and caring district and community where we have lived, have raised our family, and can enjoy an engaging, healthy, and purposeful lifestyle. Thank you all, and happy Thanksgiving, Julie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Ronnie.
Yes?
Do you have any idea how many people in Martin County participate in CER activities every year?
I just did an annual report that has numbers, if you would like that.
I'm just, I mean, it's, there are so many opportunities. I would think that it would impact so many in the, in the county.
I hope it does.
Okay. Thank you.
I think it's impressive. It's so neat to see what started forty-five years ago as basically an idea of what could be community, pro, community education and how it's turned into this comprehensive, very focused program that is, that's emphasis is on educating in our community, and it's neat to see. It's, I'm always so impressed with, when people come and present to the school board, how involved our community is. And thank you, Ronnie, and the staff at CER and everyone on the board for all the work and time that they put into seeing this community program run and run well.
I'm always impressed when I get my little booklet in the mail as to what options are available, the things that, you know, you can just get more information, and I mean, from kids' activities to adult activities to, you know, decorating and, you know, special languages and, you know, computer work. I mean, there's just, everything is in there, anything that you would want. I mean, there's just, I'm just amazed at how much is offered to our community.
Fantastic. Thank you.
I know my son was, asked me the other day if he would get to play with his friends again this summer, and he talked about the girls that were the playground instructors and the friends that he had there. So, so you have another vote to bring this, the summer playground program back. That stuck with him. He is very excited about that.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to superintendent's report and calendar.
Thank you. I was just reminded that four years ago, I had volunteered to teach a CER course, but nobody signed up for it. And the name of it was, "Why Doesn't the Electoral College Have a Football Team?" And we've had a lot of discussion about the Electoral College in the last week. It would have been a great class to teach this year. But back to the point, we have on Thursday of this week, we have a calendar committee meeting that's going to be held at the high school at three-thirty. That will be held in the high school media center. There is a committee that SDCC set up. We have a draft calendar that the administrative team has put together, and we'll try to get that done. My hope is that we can bring that calendar to the board in December for the seventeen-eighteen school year, because we're already getting phone calls wanting to know when graduation is in the summer of two thousand eighteen. And also, just a reminder that this is our only school board meeting that we have in November. We'll have one meeting in December, and that meeting will be held on Tuesday, December the thirteenth. An enrollment report, I think, has been distributed to you. We're down a first, second, and third grader at the elementary, but we picked up a seventh, tenth, and eleventh grader at the high school, and we're down one twelfth grader at the high school. So, we're down one student. We're serving now one thousand six hundred and eighty-eight students. Also, I just want to brief the board a little bit. We did start in the last couple of weeks, a new class at the high school. It's called a New to Country class. It's extended time. This is a class that's being provided to our New to Country students. These are students that are from Nicaragua, Mexico, and Guatemala, or Puerto, no, Puerto Rico, Guatemala, Honduras, and Mexico. And these are students that have very limited English skills. And so, we have a teacher, Kellen Wosley, has been teaching them. We have a pair of that's working with them two hours after school, and it's really made a difference. I've been driving them home at night at five o'clock in the school van, and it's, they're learning some English. They're telling me where to go, in, in English, where to get, how to, how to get to their house.
That's a better way to put it. Thanks for the explanation.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay. I just want to remind folks, too, that the Rotary Book Sale starts on this Friday, and that will be held at the mall, and that, it's a store between the Nail Salon and Borkart Dance Studio. And I just point that out because the proceeds from the Rotary Book Sale go exclusively for the Strive program that Rotary has at the high school. And this year, the Rotary Club has twenty high school seniors that, adult members of the Rotary Club and other folks are mentoring high school seniors.
When is that?
That starts on Friday afternoon. It'll be set up on Thursday night, and will go until the end of December. And it's a free will donation, so it's a great way. So, if anybody wants to drop off books, or CDs, or DVDs, we ask that people not drop off encyclopedias, but anything else they want to drop off, they can, either at the mall, or they can call me, and we'll make sure that those items get there. It's a really neat book sale, and a lot of people do rely on that every year. Great gifts, great Christmas gifts. Today at the high school, there was a special program going on. We are inviting adults to come into the high school to visit classes. And at nine o'clock this morning, we had fifteen different parents that came into the high school, and I think it's tomorrow, Thursday. Somebody called the district office and is asking for a tour of the high school that I'll be giving. So, we want more community to get to know what we're doing every day at our school, and so we really appreciate that.
It's a public school, and we want the public involved.
Yes, we do. That's why we call them community schools. Yep. And then finally, I just want to personally thank the local community for making some wise decisions last Tuesday. The one I was most interested in, of course, is the extension of our operating levy for the next ten years. Sixty-four point seven percent of the people voted yes. That's an incredible number. Fifty-five percent in politics is a landslide, and we had sixty-four point seven percent of the people have voted to extend our current operating levy, or what we call our learning levy, for the next ten years. And I just want to express my thank you to the community, because that keeps us fiscally sound. And that leads right into our presentation, I think, with our audit report.
Thank you. Any questions for Joe? All right. We have Sarah Cramblett here from Clifton Larson Allen to present the audit report.
All right. Am I good? Can you guys hear me? Okay. Thank you for having me tonight. For those who want to follow along in the executive audit summary that you have in front of you, I'm going to just start on page one. I'm going to go through a couple of the, the summary reports and letters, and then I'll go through the slides that show the financial numbers and bar graphs on the screen. So, very first, on page one, the most important thing that you get from us as the auditors is our audit opinion on the financial statements. That's right under the very first heading, Audit Opinion. The financial statements were fairly stated for June thirty, two thousand sixteen. We issued what is known as a clean audit report or an unmodified audit opinion. This is the highest audit opinion we can give as a result of any of our audits.
Sarah, if I could?
Yeah.
We talked about this last week, and it is, it is the highest opinion, and I think that's very important to point out. A lot of work. This is difficult. It's detailed, and it's non-stop and ongoing. So, to receive the highest opinion is very noteworthy, and we're very proud of the people that do all of this good work, so.
As you should. They put in a lot of hard work throughout the year and to prep for the audit, so.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay. It's good to give props where they're due. Associated with the audit of the financial statements, we did include three internal control comments. The first one simply relates to the fact that we come in at the beginning of the audit, receive the trial balance, and then we, as the auditors, format those into the financial statements and add the required disclosures to bring the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The second item relates to some payroll salaries and benefits that we moved from one program code to another as a result of the audit. That just more closely aligns that coding with the MDE Required Uniform Financial Accounting and Reporting Standards. So, you also see that listed down under the Minnesota Legal Compliance section of this page. And then the third item just emphasizes that in the district's fixed asset accounting records, making sure that capital assets are capitalized in the year that they're purchased, and also disposed of in those capital asset records in the year that they're physically disposed of at the district. We'll see on one of the next pages just that, a little timing difference in a project from fiscal fifteen that was capitalized in fiscal two thousand sixteen resulted in an understatement of expenses on the entity-wide financial statements. And the next section talks about compliance with Yellow Book guidelines, and we didn't identify or note any compliance issues to report there. Another piece that comes or joins in with our audit of the financial statements is called the Single Audit. We do a single audit for any entity that spends more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal grant funds. The district spent a little over a million dollars in fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and as a result, we tested the district's controls and compliance over the child nutrition cluster program. Our opinion on the compliance with that program was unmodified, and we didn't note or report any control findings associated with that audit. All right. And then I'm going to flip to page three, and we always just like to point out that there are a few accounting estimates included in the financial statements at, at year-end. A few of them relate to receivables coming from Minnesota Department of Education for state aids that are really kind of finalized in the fall, or sorry, the winter, spring of the subsequent fiscal year. And then there are a few estimates included in, in some long-term liabilities, for example, severance benefits, other post-employment benefits, and the net pension liability. Then on page four, at the bottom, just touching on some of the uncorrected misstatements that were included in the audit report. One relates to the capital asset timing difference that I mentioned just a minute ago, and then the second one relates to some property tax revenue that's been deferred or unearned since two thousand one, and it was recognized in the two thousand sixteen fiscal year. So, that just increased revenue by about fifty-five thousand dollars. All right. Now, I'm going to jump into the slides. So, like I said, I will put them up on the projector, or else you can follow along starting on page eleven in, in the report in front of you. So, this first slide shows summary activity for the general fund for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. So, just a reminder or heads-up for the board that when I'm talking about the general fund, for MDE or UFRS purposes, this also includes the district's capital fund and student activities fund. So, it's all three of those that are reported in one fund, when the reports go to Minnesota Department of Education. The, the activity is broken down into a few different buckets, and we'll look at those buckets in more detail on subsequent slides. So, if you look over on the far right, you can see the total information for the general fund. This shows revenue of nineteen million four hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars for two thousand sixteen, sorry, fiscal year two thousand sixteen, expenditures of eighteen million one hundred and three thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars, eleven hundred and seventy-seven dollars of insurance proceeds, and that nets revenue over expenditure of one million three hundred and fifty-nine thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars. So, that took fund balance from six million three hundred and twenty thousand twenty-four dollars at June thirty, two thousand fifteen, to seven million six hundred and seventy-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars at June thirty, two thousand sixteen. So, this just shows, you know, that you guys are well-set up in your fund balance and have a strong financial position at the end of the fiscal year. All right. This slide shows a five-year trend of your unassigned fund balance. This is the fund balance that the district has the most control over how you're, you're spending these dollars. The board's policy is to have one month of operating expense in, in fund balance. The unofficial goal, or more importantly, the goal, is to have two months of operating expense in fund balance. In actuality, the, the three million two hundred and sixty-five thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollar unassigned fund balance equates to eighteen percent, or nine weeks of operating expense in fund balance. to 18% or nine weeks of operating expense in fund balance. So you're over that two-month goal. All right. This next slide just shows a five-year trend of the non-spendable fund balance. This non-spendable fund balance, I'm sorry, is directly offset by by prepaid expenditures and a little bit of inventory. So it's just meant to highlight an amount that's not in liquid or cash form. And it's a minimal dollar amount of $29,466 at the end of 2016. The next slide shows the five-year trend for the district's committed fund balance. You can see it stayed the same from June 30, 2015 to June 30, 2016 at $507,727. $400,000 of this committed fund balance is committed by the board for retirement and separation benefits and the remainder is committed for masonry projects. All right. This next slide shows assigned fund balance. Assigned fund balance is a portion of fund balance that's assigned by the the district's administration. So it's just shy of $3 million at June 30, 2016. So this was just meant to to look ahead at the big picture and plan out what the district is going to need over the next three or four years. This assigned fund balance includes money set aside for literacy, technology, curriculum, wellness, student activities, Q comp, window settlement, staff development, and vocational purposes. The increase from 2015 is largely related to more set asides for technology, curriculum, staff development, and vocational purchases in the future. All right. This next slide shows the district's operating capital fund balance for the last five years. It went up about $100,000 from June 30, 2015 to June 30, 2016. The ending operating capital fund balance is $470,000. And it sounds like next year in 2017, it's gonna drop back down to close to 2015 levels. This is something that the district receives state aid and some levy for every every fiscal year. All right. These next two slides show state aid funding that's restricted at year end. However, the state aid funding ended June 30, 2016 and it's replaced by the long-term facilities maintenance funding for fiscal 17 and and future years. So this health and safety fund balance was $401,000 at June 30, 2016. For the next couple of years, there may be some levy adjustments rolling through rolling through finalized levies that will adjust that fund balance, but you won't see any new revenue coming in through this fund And same thing for the deferred maintenance fund balance. After fiscal year 2016, this funding source goes away and there's a levy levy adjustment in 2017 that zeros out this fund balance. So it will be zero at June 30, 2017. All right. This next slide shows the food service fund balance for the last five years. An increase from $197,000 at June 30, 2015 to $259,000 at June 30, 2016. One thing with this food service fund balance or the food service fund itself is that it's self-sustaining. It takes in revenues and and spends those revenues without borrowing money from from the general fund. Revenue running through this fund was about $1.1 million and expenses were $1.05 million. So the main increases is related to breakfast served in the classroom and free breakfast for the junior and senior high that that started in fiscal 15. All right. The community service fund operates operates similarly to the food service fund in the fact that it's self-sustaining. It's treated as a separate kind of accounting entity and has separate revenue and expenses and doesn't rely on the general fund for support. Revenue running through this fund was $623,000 for fiscal 2016 and expenses were $569,000, resulting in an increase of about $55,000 for fiscal year 2016. Of the 100 and about $50,000 restricted in fund balance at June 30, 2016, about $64,000 of this was set aside for ECFE funding purposes and about $52,000 of this 150,000 was restricted for school or is restricted for school readiness, future spending purposes. All right. This next slide shows the five-year trend for your debt service fund balance and you can see a big spike for the 2016 year. This is all related to the bonds that the district issued in June of 2016. There are funding bonds that were issued in June 2016, but they won't refund they won't refund the bonds until February of 2019. So the district has the the bond proceeds sitting in an escrow account until that February 1st, 2019 refunding date. So it'll be, you know, elevated for the next few years. And this next slide just shows the sources of the revenue for the general fund. The largest purple portion of this pie graph shows that the district receives about 80% of its general fund revenue from state sources. And second or second to that, the district receives about 13 and a half percent of its general fund revenue from property taxes. Only 2.3% of the district's general fund revenue come from federal grants or federal sources. And then the remaining 4.2% come from other miscellaneous grants, local revenues, charges for services. All right. And this next graph shows the district's ADMs or enrollment for the last five years. So you can see it's remained very stable over the last five years. And there's a slight increase from 2015 of about 11 students. All right. And then this last set of graphs is gonna they're all going to be set up the same. They're gonna show total expenses for the general fund divided by the number of ADMs or number of students at the district. So it's meant to show expenditures per student. You'll see a five-year trend and those will be the blue, if I can find my mouse, the blue shaded bars on the left-hand side. The green bar in the middle shows expenditures per student for districts of comparable size. So other districts in the state of Minnesota that have between 1,000 and 1,999 students. And then the red graph on the far right is showing state average expenditures per student. So that's for all districts in the state of Minnesota regardless of of the the population size. This first graph shows expenditures, oh, sorry, one other thing to mention. The comparable school district and the the state average numbers are from 2015 simply because that's the most recent information that's available. The state won't have that information available for 2016 until all district audits are turned into MDE at the end of December. So if you want to compare apples to apples, make sure you're looking at the 2015 district bar graph to compare to the the benchmarks. So for district and school administration and support, this is meant to show your expenditures for your superintendent, your human resource office, your business office, other other principals and that that type of support staff. So you can see that it's low compared to the comparable comparable districts and the state average numbers. A slight increase from 2015 to 2016 and that's largely related to salaries and purchase services. All right. The next graph shows expenditures per student for regular instruction. This is where a bulk of the district's classroom expenses are. So a lot of teacher and para salaries are sitting in in this graph. It also equates or shows you about $8.9 million of the district's total expenditures are sitting within this graph category. So you can see that you're higher than comparable districts and state average, looking at the 2015 comparable numbers. And the increase from 2015 to 2016 is largely related to salary All right. Same thing on this next graph, sorry, for vocational instruction. This graph includes the district's expenditures for a lot of your vocational type programs, so welding, construction trades, AIG Academy, Family and Consumer Science. So it looks like the district is really emphasizing these types of programs and and offering a lot to students in these categories. All right. Special education expenditures per student. You can see they're pretty similar 2015 to 2016. There's a few more teachers in this category offset by the movement of some salaries to another category that we'll see on a graph a few slides down. So this includes all the costs for special education with the exception of transportation. That's grouped into just a a general transportation slide. Instructional support services. This graph includes expenses for IT, curriculum, staff development, staff development, media center. The increase from 2015 to 2016 is largely related to an additional media media center personnel or position that was added in fiscal 16 and some reading curriculum that was purchased in fiscal 15 and fiscal 16. All right. This pupil support services graph showing expenses per student includes expenses for nurses, social workers, and counselors. And the spike from 2015 to 2016 is largely related to that group of salaries and benefits that we moved from the special education All right. Expenses for site buildings, equipment, and other encompasses costs of operating the district's buildings. So custodial staff, custodial supplies, utilities, building repairs would all fall into this graph category. The the decrease from 2015 to 2016 is largely related to some savings in in heating fuel costs in the winter of 2015. Okay. Capital expenditures. This includes all of the district's larger projects or equipment purchases. 2015 was a a higher expense per per student year and that included the district's parking that project, some bigger technology, equipment, and software purchases, and a masonry project. So nothing of that that volume or that dollar amount in fiscal 16 resulting in the drop in in the bar graphs. And just one note that the 2016, sorry, 2016 number included some cost for the purchase of the greenhouse. All right. Food service costs per student increased a little bit from 2015 to 2016, mainly on the supplies category and a lot of it related to some some federal grant or federal fresh fruit and vegetable purchases and commodities received by the district. Again, just a reminder with the food service and the community service graph, which is up coming up in a couple of slides, that these funds are self-sustaining. So, you know, they are being fully supported by food service revenues. All right. Transportation costs per student held very steady year over year. A little bit higher than comparable districts and state average, but you guys do have a wider geographic footprint to to, yeah, get all the kids gathered up into school. Community service, again, expenses per per student are very steady, 2015 to 2016, and again, are fully supported by community service fund revenues. All right. Last one is debt service. Expenditures per student, really, again, pretty steady year over year. The spike in 2015 is related to the payoff of a refunding bond. So that resulted in a large expense to a fiscal agent to pay off some old debt. Other than that, that's all I had for my graphs and my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions or clarify anything.
Any questions?
Community service, what does that encompass?
Community.
Okay.
Again?
I just want to point out, this is always one of my favorite times of year because you get a chance to look back, but also forces us to look forward. And, you know, we had a great year financially last year. Our enrollment was up a little bit. Right now, our enrollment's down just a little bit compared to last year because we have a very small senior class going through the pipeline. It's our smallest class of 105, I think. And but what I think is interesting, kind of a summation, is that our district, our school board, is investing our revenue on our district priorities. You know, we have lower dollars that we spend on administration, which I think is always popular. But we're spending more money on direct instruction, more money on curriculum, more money on technology. And you can tell that, you know, we're one of the few school districts that's really investing heavily in the in our vocational programs, which also includes business because business is part of the CT program. I see our business ed teacher in the background, so I thought I would mention that. But that's part of that. But it shows that that our priorities are being funded because the board has set those as top priorities and we're making sure that our our revenue dollars are going directly to kids and the support services. And when you mentioned about, you know, the special ed numbers coming down, I think at one time, were we coding the social workers to special ed? And what we found out there is that if you encode social workers to special ed, but only for the specific amount of time they're serving special ed students. If they're not serving special ed students, you really need to code them to support services. So that's why there looks like a shift. It's the same amount of dollars that are being spent. But also, we did add one additional social worker a year ago at the elementary school. And so we have deans of students and social workers to really work and nurses, full-time nurses now, to really work on student issues. And we have four administrators, two principals, I should say, at each building to work directly with our faculty. So I think we're staffed very well. And I'm just very proud of our district. And once again, a big thank you for our community for, I think, acknowledging that and for renewing our levy for the next decade. Because I was sharing with a friend of mine over in Grand Meadow where I came from, and many of the school districts around the Grand Meadow area did not renew their levies. They failed. And many tried to have increases and those failed. And many had bond issues and those failed. And so we're fortunate. We're very blessed to live in a community that supports public education with our local property tax dollars. And we appreciate that. And Sarah, we appreciate your presentation.
All right. Well, thank you again for having me.
Very good.
Lots of detail, like an auditor one. And thank you, Sue, and your team for working with us. They're very pleasant to work with, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, this is also the first time in my eight years on the board that we're actually at our goal of having two months of reserve. So thank you for your diligence in in that and glad to glad to see it.
Well, Dan, I'm glad you pointed it out because the one thing we have to be cautious about is we have a new legislature coming in to the Minnesota Capitol. And as you see, 80% of our funding comes from the state Capitol. And what we've been told so far from various education lobbyists is not to expect more than a 1% increase on the state formula. And a 1% increase on the state formula only generates $115,000, which doesn't even pay for our steps and lanes for our teachers. And so the fact that we have a two-month fund balance is important because we're going to have to use some of that over the next few years just to maintain and protect our current programs. But if you did notice that we have almost $3 million set aside and that covers for the next four or five years, purchases for curriculum, purchase for technology, purchase for staff development, purchases for literacy, and and special purchases for some vocational programs that we plan to run this summer. So not only do we have money set aside, but I think we have, we've insulated our community school district to protect us from a financial downturn. Because we do expect a harsh winter this year. They claim it's going to be colder and it's going to be snowier. And that's costly. And so that money has to come from somewhere. So we got to be protective that we don't overspend, be conservative with what we have, and make sure that we're in great shape for the next generation of kids.
Thank you. Dan, moving on to donation resolutions.
Yes, if you look in your packet.
Don't we need to have a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. We have to accept what Sarah's presented. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Um, anyone?
Anyone like to provide that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Dan, a second by Dell, to approve the 2015-16 audit report. Any discussion?
Other than it is very noteworthy that they had their highest grade and highest level of grade. So excellent work, just excellent work within the district.
Yes, thank you to Sue and her department for keeping track of this huge budget.
Keeping track of our pennies and dimes and nickels and...
And it's no small task and it's really a big responsibility. So, well, well done.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comments? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Now, moving on to donations. Dan?
Yes, the first is in appendix B. I will introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas Jaden Garlic has donated to the high school small engines class, a 1998 Chevy Cavalier valued at $600. Be it resolved by the Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept this gift.
Thank you, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Now we'll take a roll call vote. Danielle?
Aye.
Dell?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, Dan?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Rufus?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you for the donation. And also another donation here in appendix B1. I will introduce this resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas Fairmont Elementary School received a donation from Fairmont 3M of office and classroom supply products valued at $3,038. Be it resolved by the Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept the gift.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll go for, do our roll call vote. Danielle?
Aye.
Dell?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, Dan?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Rufus?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. And now moving on to financial reports and bills. Sue?
Tonight on the agenda, we have the approval of the October 2016 Treasurers Report and Single Checks, wire transfers from October 21st through November 10th, and the payment of the November 8th bills. So I'll begin with October 2016 Treasurers Report that you should have. So on the far left, we have our different funds. And then within each fund, if there's different accounts. And then we have our end of the month cash balance. And then on the flip side of that, on the top shows our expenditure report as of October 2016. So on the far left, we have our different funds. And the next column is our, our budget. And that's actually the budget that I'll present next. But it's our, the new adopted budget. And then you can have, the next column, you'll see our monthly expenditures. So that's what we spent during that month of October. And then we have our year-to-date and then our percent of budget spent. So overall, we're at just over 21% of our budget spent in all funds. And in the general fund, just about 19%. So then that's something that I'll monitor, like with our teaching staff, their, their pay starts in September, so they've been paid for two months. Our 12-month employees have been paid for four months. So just as the months roll, roll through, I, I watch that just in help to make sure that our budget is appropriate. And are we running into any areas that we need to reassess? Okay, then in the next part, we have our transfers and wires from October 21st through November 10th. There's several that second, third, and fourth are all from the October payroll. And then the next two, if you look in the middle column that says the from column, they're from the state of Minnesota. So we've made a little bit of a change where our money from the state of Minnesota used to always go into our liquid asset fund. But as we've worked with our local bank and, and have come up with some interest, that's very close to what we're getting at the liquid asset fund. We're having more of those dollars come local. And so the first one is some of our federal funds, about $48,000. And that's from our title programs. And so I submit those dollars into a serve system at the state of Minnesota after each payroll. And so we receive those dollars on October 27th. And then the next one is called our ideas payment. And that's what the state uses for our metered payments from, from the state, like for our, our general ed aid. And our, really any money that comes from the state is coming in this metered system for the most part. And so generally, the 15th and the 30th of every month, we will receive an ideas payment unless it corresponds with, where we've gotten a large payment from the county. And so actually today, November 15th, we did not receive an ideas payment. So they kind of are metering the money out, but they're watching what we're getting from the county as well. And then on the bottom of this, you can see our total disbursements for our October payroll was $1,074,000. Do you have any questions on those two? Okay, then you should have a single check register. And it's a check to teachers on, or a payment to teachers on call. We did need to do a single payment on this. It's just based on the timing of, they invoice us once a week. And it just doesn't always tie in with when we're doing our check runs. In order to avoid finance charges, we needed to do a single check here. And then you should have a register, a P-card register. And the P-card withdrawal or wire out was actually on the list of transfers and wires. So then here's the corresponding detail on that, just a couple to bring to your attention. There's a payment to EMC Insurance Company for $37,000. That's a quarterly payment for our property insurance and our work comp insurance. A few down from that, Minnesota Secretary of State. That is the lien on the hunt farm for the 2017 growing season. A few board meetings back, we approved a new contract with the grower. And so then we usually, we always put a lien on the crops. That's what that is for. Any questions on the P-card register? And then the last register you have is dated November 8th. And in the absence of having that November 8th board meeting, Julie and I did meet to review everything so our payments could be sent out timely. I will review just a couple here. Check number 59115 made out to, I believe it's pronounced Volter Companies. This is for an airscreen cooler at the high school cafeteria. A few meetings back, our food service director, Jackie Lemay, was here and she had a picture of a, a new upright cooler. And that's payment for that. Check number 59121 made out to Culligan Water Conditioning. This is for four additional water bottle filling stations. Two more were added at the elementary, or excuse me, two were added at the elementary and two additional were added at the high school.
You know, Sue, I noticed today when I went past the 3-6 gymnasium, that the counter on that Culligan water filling station's 2,640. And we just put those in about two weeks ago. That's, that's a lot of water those little guys are drinking, so that's good.
So at the elementary, we have one out, essentially outside of each gymnasium. And at the high school, there's one by the gym, there's one in the hallway near the office, there's one on the second floor near the 7-9 locker area. And then there's one on the second floor in the vocational area. Check number 59137 made out to Greg Grady Construction. This is for the cement work that was necessary for the bleachers at the baseball field. So that kind of the whole, where the bleachers are and the whole apron and all of that. And then check number 59164 made out to Seating and Athletic Facility Enterprises. That is the payment for tearing out the old bleachers and putting in the new bleachers. So that's not the portable, that's the, that's the bigger, the bigger set of bleachers. That's all I had for you. Do you have any questions on any of the registers? As I mentioned, Julie and I reviewed that register back on November 8th and the payments were sent out. And then we reviewed the other ones as well.
If there are no questions, then I would make a motion to approve the October 2016 Treasurers Report and Single Checks, wire transfers for October 21st, 2016 to November 10th, 2016, and payment of the November 8th, 2016 bills.
Thank you, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Sue, moving on to the adopted 2016-17 budget.
Alright, so you should all have appendix C in front of you. And it's entitled the 2016-2017 adopted budget. So each year, we need to review the budget three times. In June, prior to the start of a school year, we approve a budget and that's the preliminary budget. And that was approved by the board on June 14th. So by law, we have to approve that before that July 1 time. And then in the fall, when all of our staff is in place and after the audit is finalized and presented, and if we're still in the midst of negotiations, we like to have that finished. Then that's the, this budget, the adopted budget. And then again, in the spring and summer, we'll likely come back to the board to look at another budget that we'll call the revised budget. So this appendix C is the 2016-2017 adopted budget. As I review this, I'll compare it a little bit with that preliminary budget that you approved back in June. On the far left, you have the different funds. And then like within the general fund, you have, you can see a lot of different funds, some that are assigned and committed and unassigned, kind of corresponding with what Sarah spoke to tonight in the audit report. Then the next column that says beginning fund balance, that is our actual beginning fund balance from the audit. So how we ended the 15-16 school year, these, these numbers have all been updated. Where with the preliminary budget was still, what did we anticipate? In the general fund, changes have been made both to revenues and expenditures. The bottom line in the general fund unassigned fund balance at the end of the 16-17 school year, were projected to be right about $1,000, different than what we projected with that preliminary budget. So very close, even though there were changes on both the revenue and expenditure side. With this adopted budget, we're using 1,669 students served in our buildings. So a little reduction from the 15-16 school year. Expenditures are up about $430,000 than from the preliminary budget. We've budgeted $242,000 more in curriculum and technology than what, than what was in that preliminary budget. And that came from an assigned fund balance that was previously put there. In addition, from the preliminary, I've added a $50,000 budget that is coming from the assigned area as well for vocational summer programs and equipment improvements. And then we are putting $75,000 from the unassigned area into the Q-comp area. And then, and looking at where we ended our year last year and what our electrical budget was, we felt we needed to bump that up. And also our substitute teacher budgets needed to be increased. Overall, we're projecting ending the year with, in that unassigned fund balance area with $3,241,000, which is just over, slightly over our two-month goal. Total general fund revenues are $18,313,734. Looking at 14% of that as local dollars, 2.6 from the federal government, and the balance of 83.4 coming from the state of Minnesota. As Superintendent Brown mentioned, you know, you're looking ahead to the legislative session. We're not sure what they will do with the formula. But let's say it's only a 1% increase on the formula, that only generates about $115,000. Our total general fund expenditures are $18,998,87. And that does exceed our revenues by $596,000. But in that unassigned area, we're almost even. We have expenditures exceeding revenues of about $18,000. So that's pretty close to just having the same amount at, at the beginning of the year as, as at the end of the year. But looking at that difference, we are spending about $578,000 from funds that have been previously assigned for certain projects. Those being assigned for literacy and staff development and technology and curriculum, wellness and Q-comp. And then new for the 16-17 school year, we set up an assigned fund balance for the vocational department. And I believe Superintendent Brown mentioned a little of this, but plans are in the works for a Saturday welding class. And then preliminary plans are in the works for summer courses in the areas of welding, ag, and construction trades. In addition, we'll be using some of the vocational funds, looking at some additional welders, welder replacements. And then also going to be looking at other equipment needs in the vocational area. In prior years, when we achieved savings from either exceeding our revenue budget or spending less than our expenditure budget, you know, we meet to discuss what to do with those savings. And our first priority was to achieve that two months of operating expense in our unassigned fund balance, which we have done. And then what we do is we, we really look at a three-to-five-year plan in curriculum and technology, as well as staff development, some of the other areas. So we can really look and plan out what dollars are we going to need. And that's where we put those assigned dollars. I do know that our technology and curriculum budgets will change this spring. And we'll start meeting with administration probably the end of December, beginning of January, to again, look at those three-to-five-year plans. What we want to do is look at the curriculum cycle and the curriculum needs, you know, specifically for the 17-18, but also for the years going out. And make sure we have all the different subject areas and, and all that so we can make the best decisions we can with the whole picture. And then in addition, on the technology side, what we'll look at is, is an inventory of all of the student devices that we have. And then how we would like to expand that. And then look at how, how we can achieve that. And then at some point, we'll need to go into a replacement mode on that. So we will, we plan to make decisions yet this spring that, about those purchases in curriculum and technology, make those purchases yet in this school year. So then those student devices and curriculum and everything can be ready right away in September of 2017 for the start of the 17-18 school year. Do you have any questions on the general fund? Okay, moving to food service. The adopted budget shows revenues and exceeding expenditures by about $25,000. This is about a $7,800 improvement from the preliminary budget. With this adopted budget, we're looking at revenues of $1,134,000, expenditures $1,109,000. In community service, we are showing some changes from the preliminary budget. Looked to end the year with just over $24,000 in the CER and unassigned area. Just under $18,000 in adult basic education, about $65,000 in early childhood family education, about $43,000 in school readiness. During the 16-17 school year, we anticipate receiving about $59,000 for the Pathways 2 program, which is the early learning scholarship program. And our learning readiness, or school readiness dollars from the state are also increasing. Moving to the capital fund, budgets here have been updated to reflect actual projects scheduled. We're projected to end the 16-17 school year with $756,000 in the fund balance. I'm looking at the first one, deferred maintenance. We start with $5,725. And then in the revenue column, I have a negative. And that's because we have a negative levy adjustment that will be recognized during the 16-17 school year. So that will zero out that area. Next, we have health and safety. And we have a negative levy adjustment of $41,000 that we'll recognize, that will reduce that fund balance some. So no new revenues for each of, either of those, as Sarah mentioned in the audit report, and no expenditures there either. Any expenditures that were eligible in those two areas will now be in our long-term facilities, maintenance area. And if we look at that area, you can see we're overspending by $121,000. And we are allowed by the state to overspend that and go into deficit in that, that fund balance. And that's because we have upcoming levy authority to cover that. And then the very bottom one there of the assigned window settlement, at this point, there are no plans for that $102,000. Okay, then next to our debt service and trust and agency, those budgets both changed just slightly from the preliminary budget. Debt service is the fund that we pay the principal and interest for our bonds. And trust and agency is for the hunt fund. And then the last fund is student activity. And revenues and expenditures here will vary each year due to activities that their group plans. So budgets here have been changed to reflect basically the activity from the prior year. Our total revenues in all funds, $23,771,690. Expenditures, $24,648,635. You can see we do have expenditures exceeding those revenues by $870,000. We did talk about in the general fund, how the majority of that is dollars we're planning to spend from assigned fund balances. And then we have the dollars from, that we're overspending in the long-term facility maintenance area. I did meet with three members of the board. I did meet with three members of the board. Superintendent Brown and I met with three members of the board at a meeting on November tenth. So we did review this already at that time. Do you have any questions? I, I will say that the, really the biggest unknowns with a budget are always enrollment. Cause that's, as with doing that enrollment report, you always see that that's fluctuating. And then always with our special education, both the revenues and the expenditures. That's always a tough one too. You know, at this point, I don't have an estimate from Southern Plains. So you know, kind of, I just do my best on that one. But any questions on the budget?
I think so. Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen adopted budget as presented tonight.
Thank you, Julie. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Julie and a second by Rufus to approve the two thousand sixteen-seventeen adopted budget as presented this evening. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And thank you again, Sue. We have no old business, so we'll move on to new business. And the first item which we will be covering is the canvassing of the election. Danielle?
Yes, we have a resolution for canvassing returns of special election. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District, twenty-seven fifty-two, Fairmont Area Schools, Minnesota, that the special election held in and for the school district on November eighth, two thousand sixteen was in all respects duly and legally called and held. The returns thereof have been duly canvassed. And the votes cast at the special election for and against the questions submitted to the electors were as follows. And this was regarding the question for extending our levy. Or the, yeah. So voted yes were three thousand, eight hundred and nineteen. And voted no was two thousand, eighty-three votes.
Got that one?
We have to do them separate?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second that resolution.
Thank you. Now we need roll call vote. Danielle?
Aye.
Dell?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Dan?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Rufus?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
And then our second one, a resolution canvassing votes of school board election. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District, twenty-seven fifty-two, it is hereby found, determined and declared that the general election of the voters of the district held on November eighth, two thousand sixteen was in all respects duly and legally called and held. As specified in the attached abstract and return of votes cast, the following votes were cast for the election of three school board members for four-year, four-year term vacancies on the board caused by expiration of term on the first Monday in January, next following the general election as follows. Julie Lowey, three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three votes. Nicole Green, three thousand, one hundred and seventy votes. Dan Brookins, two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine votes. Michael Edmund, two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six votes. And Myron Muller, one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine votes. Candidates Julie Lowey, Nicole Green and Dan Brookins, having received the highest number of votes, are elected to four-year terms beginning the first Monday in January, two thousand seventeen. The school district clerk is hereby authorized to clarify the results of the election to the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located in whole or in part. So I make a motion to approve.
And I would second that resolution.
Danielle, can you just read this? I introduce?
I, Danielle should introduce the foregoing resolution and move its adoption, which motion?
And then seconded by Dell. Thank you. Any discussion? I think it's remarkable that in our district, of those voters who are registered as district voters, ninety percent voted. That's incredible. That's impressive. And I thank the voters for being so involved in this wonderful democratic process that we have. And thank them for their support.
And you compare that with the state with seventy-four percent statewide. And nationally, fifty-three percent of Americans voted. But in this area, ninety percent. That's incredible.
So congratulations to Nicole, Dan and Julie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any more discussion or questions? We'll move to a roll call vote. Danielle?
Aye.
Dell?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Dan?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Rufus?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. December school board meeting schedule. Rufus?
The board is typically held only one board meeting in December, canceling the second meeting, which falls around the Christmas holiday. Should we need, should the need arise for a second meeting, a special board meeting would be held, I therefore offer a motion to approve, canceling the December twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen school board meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion by Rufus, a second by Julie, to cancel the December twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen school board meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Motion carries. Choir Orchestra Trip, Julie?
Yes, the choir orchestra department is requesting approval to travel with their students to Chicago in February of two thousand seventeen. To date, ninety-seven students have indicated interest in attending at a cost of four hundred and seventy-eight dollars per person. Some students have elected not to go on the trip, but no student was denied the opportunity due to financial constraints. So then I would like to make a motion to approve the trip for the orchestra and choir to attend a band trip, or a trip to Chicago in February of two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to personnel, medical leave request. Dell?
We do have a medical leave request. And I would like to make a motion that we approve the medical leave request for Carrie Clayton beginning on or about January ninth, two thousand seventeen, and extending for twelve weeks or per medical recommendation.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Employment. Rufus?
The coaches for the fine arts and winter activities have been identified. And we have a whole list of those names. And so I would like to do them in turn. First, fine arts. I'd like to make a motion to approve the employment of the fine arts coaches for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries.
I would then like to make a motion to approve the employment of the winter coaches for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Rufus, second by Danielle. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to board committee reports. CER Advisory Council meeting. Danielle?
Yeah, we met last Thursday, the tenth. And we had a presenting, a presentation from Minnesota River Area Agency on aging. And she basically came and kind of gave us an update on our county and kind of some numbers of, you know, where that older age group is in our community and how it's growing and where it will be years from now. And just kind of talked about some of the resources that they have available for senior citizens and ways that they can help them and how communities can help with different services for them, having things for them to do or helping them, you know, find whatever for their needs, having stuff available. And that was pretty much the majority of our meeting, was the presentation, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Danielle? Okay. Policy Committee, we met on November tenth. Rufus, Dell and I, along with Superintendent Brown, met to review some policies. We reviewed policies, mostly in the, actually all of them were in the five hundred section. The first group of policies did not require full board approval because they were approved by the policy committee. Dealt with Policy five oh eight, extended school year for certain students with IEPs, Individualized Education Programs. Policy five one seven on student recruiting. Policy five one eight, DNR and DNI orders. Policy five one nine, interviews of students by outside agencies. Policy five two eight, student parental family and marital status nondiscrimination policy. We also were, we briefly, very briefly looked at some policies that will require full board approval and they will be presented at a forthcoming meeting. And we looked at some, that includes district policies that are unique to our district, foreign exchange students and academic integrity policy. We also discussed some ongoing, the need to have an ongoing agenda where we have old business that we look at and new business for each meeting. And some, and some, basically some things that we'd like to continue to look at and process as a policy committee. Any questions or additions? Rufus?
Well, a couple of points. One thing we discussed briefly was some concerns that we've been hearing regarding the new reading curriculum at the high school. The concerns centered around the fact that it's, it's a challenging curriculum. And it, and it pairs with the curriculum that has been recently introduced at the elementary school. It is an important step forward for the district. It's an important step forward in preparing our students for college and careers. And they're having a little bit of an adjustment, challenge, both students and staff. And, you know, we recognize that, you know, we're going to work through this and make sure it works. We're not going to give it up because it is, it is very important. But I wanted, you know, parents and families to know that, you know, that it's, it's a challenge for all of us. And so, you know, hopefully we'll work through it successfully. The other thing that we discussed briefly was, we had some discussions. Some of the board members, staff, welfare had a meeting with some of the, or the high school principals regarding making sure that students have the resources they need for success. And one of those is adequate number of textbooks. And so we did a, I think Superintendent Brown, you know, made sure that we had a recent, or an update inventory. Because in, in some years past, I think there was a heavy reliance on the concept of, of online textbooks and, and hoping to, you know, save money and, and get away from, you know, physical textbooks. However, there are some courses that, you know, that, you know, that really, you know, I think the, the physical textbooks are, are critical. Fortunately, you know, we're able to replace, you know, and, and add to our inventory, you know, quite inexpensively, you know, through used book vendors. You know, paying, you know, ten, twenty dollars for a book that traditionally costs two hundred dollars. And so that, so that's an ongoing project. And we hope to make sure that, you know, every kid who would like to have a textbook to bring home and, and study from, you know, has that opportunity. I think those are the two main things.
We also talked about the need to discuss and go over in-depth the Quaglia survey. It was a big thing that we tried to do last spring. And we need to really look at that, those results and, and see what we can do. When the public speaks and our students speak and our teachers and staff speak, we need to listen. And that's why we do surveys. So we will be doing that soon. Anything else you'd like to add, Dell, about what we discussed?
It is kind of important that the public realizes how many hours are dedicated here. And not, not that we need them to know, but everything that is brought to us, we thoroughly try to vet for the benefit of everybody, of all the students, the teachers and everybody in the, in the community. And the amount of meetings are immense, but so worthwhile. And again, tonight, we heard about the, the highest level of achievement with our budget. There's so many good successes here. And it's not because it just happens on its own. So it's important work, but it's great to live in a community where we have everybody that's willing to do it. So I'm happy and proud to be part of this group.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Any other things anyone would like to bring up before the board?
Definitely. I think we need to congratulate our Fairmont Girls Cross Country Team who won the state Class A championship last Saturday.
And the ranked number six in the nation.
Yeah, but just an outstanding season and, and outstanding work by the coaches and volunteers and especially the, the girls on the team to, to achieve something like that. It's, it's a rare thing. Except for Coach Bonk, this is actually the, the tenth different state championship team that he has coached between cross country and track and field over his, over his career. And, and what an outstanding group of, of young ladies. And congratulations to them. And congratulations also to everybody involved in the musical. It was fantastic. I really loved it. My son won it. He, he went twice. He loved it so much. So, and my daughter was part of it, running the spotlights. And it's just amazing to see we had almost a hundred and fifty kids from seventh grade through seniors, from all walks to, to pull that together. And to Sarah and to Kate and Molly, what a fantastic job you all did.
I just like, would like to say, it's an unbiased opinion, is my grandchildren attended from Mankato. And they had seen, they said a similar play, but it had Little Mermaid and, and that in it. But they said that Fairmont's production was so much better. So I just think that's just wonderful to share that with the, those involved with the play and the musical.
Yeah, it was a great hit. And, and I'd like to recognize, you know, the, those that weren't able to, you know, come out on stage for the, you know, for the applause, the orchestra that we heard throughout the, the play, which was fantastic. And, and the stage crew that, that, you know, kept moving the, you know, the stage props around. So it was a, it was a huge production and it was well worthwhile.
Thank you. All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to adjourn this school board meeting at six twenty-six P.M. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Meeting adjourned.